Madam Chair, we're live.
Got it. Welcome back to our meeting at our 3:00 public hearing on February 24th. So before we begin, we have a little bit of a conundrum, and I am going to chastise a bit. So, public hearing is closed when we start receiving letters from attorneys. That's not part of the process, and so in future, please, public hearing is closed, please do not notify us. If you need to notify somebody, contact our staff, and that way we are not outside of requirements for meetings. So, my question for my fellow commissioners, I've done it long enough, they've done it too. I don't read anything that I get once a public hearing is closed. So, I know that we did have a couple of letters. I know that the irrigation district gave us late information. We have two pathways forward that I'm putting in front of my fellow commissioners. We can table this and use the information provided and postpone this. We will have to renotice, I believe, for the future, or we can... I haven't read it, so I'm not going to use that in my deliberation. The information provided, I don't know if you guys did, and if you want, you know, to use that information, then we need to table. If not, then we will move forward without including any information that came in at once the public hearing was closed. I don't know what you guys want, so I'm open to feedback.
The letters didn't come from the applicant or the appellant's attorneys. I don't think that we would have to open this back up to reconsider them or to consider them.
We did get one from an irrigation district?
Yes.
And that was, again, after the fact? What my thought was, because we had discussed delivering irrigation downstream, is that within the development agreement, that's where we deal with that? So, I don't, I don't know what the irrigation district is asking for, but I think what we do is in the, in the development agreement, we state, you know, that you need to work with the irrigation district in delivering irrigation to the downstream users. It's state code anyway, so they have to anyway, but we can deal with that if there's specific regulations by the irrigation district. Oh, I don't know what was in the other letters from the attorneys, but if we didn't get it before the public hearing was closed, I'm not going to consider it. That's my feeling on things. So, what would you guys like to do? Happy to table it too. I don't know. I do like transparency. We do have these two in front of us. I'm struggling both ways. If we reopen, then we have to table it today and notice, so that people can respond to whatever information was provided. Personally, I, I would like to just go ahead and proceed and get this one done, because I don't, I mean, today was the day for deliberation, and so I just, I don't, you know, things out of the fact. I just don't like doing that. I think once we close the public hearing, it's closed, and any additional information should have been given before we closed.
It's always that way. You're supposed to always have all your information when we go into, because if we even deliberated that evening...
Then we've been done.
Then we've been done.
So unless our attorney advises us differently, I would just move, we move on to deliberation.
You're good with that, Arnie?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if you... So, you've had a time period set for people to provide comment. If people continue to provide information after that, they're outside of the window, and it doesn't need to be considered in the decision, especially if you do not read that materials. It's your option whether to proceed either way. Number one, you could not consider the information, continue with your deliberations. Or, number two, you could consider it, but then you would have to table and notice, as the chair has already said. Problem with doing that is it could create the perception that other people could delay and disrupt your future decisions by continuing to submit information after the public hearing period is closed.
Well, what's to say we do that, we have another public hearing, and then somebody does the same thing afterwards? I don't like the precedence that it sets, that, you know, if we just continue to accept stuff, that's not the way that the process works. We give you a timeframe, make sure your information is in, that you want to be included in the public hearing, and after that, we're done accepting information. Because if not, we just continue to move forward, move forward, and move forward.
I agree.
Unless there was some information that you guys wanted to receive that you have not already received, and I think we move on to deliberation and set this, you know, it's a standard. We will accept your information when the public hearing is open, and after that, we're done.
Yeah, the PDAR just opens the can of limbs. And then you keep going and keep going. It'd be good, just, just let's deliberate and let's move on.
That too. Yes, I am.
Okay.
Who wants to start?
Thank you, Arnie.
Thank you. I said a lot of my deliberations in our past meeting talking about this. I, in thinking about it more, the one thing I do think is that, is that the condition of approval needs to state clearly that no water will leave the property. I think it says, "If water leaves the property, then the applicant will..." So, and I know that that was something that had been brought up, that they believed by the appellant's attorney that they would like to see that condition of approval be more clear, not if, when it does, then the applicant will be required to do testing. Correct?
So that was the surface water cannot leave, leave the site.
That's true.
And irrigation water will be piped through, and it will be a contained area.
Yes.
I probably need a microphone. Sorry.
Those are working, so, or yeah, there's one too.
Let me repeat that.
Yes, please. The record.
So, surface water cannot leave the site. The irrigation water will be piped through to the downstream water right holders, and then it will be a contained system on-site.
Can we add that we will address that in the development agreement? So, that gives us a negotiation tool if there is concerns there or something.
Right, and I anticipate that these conditions will be fine-tuned, and you will give the final approval in the facts and conclusions for the conditions of approval.
It, it does concern me a little bit. I don't quite know how to do this to protect the applicant and the farms around it. There are other farms that are around there that do fertilize and use something that might affect the organic certification. I don't know quite how to put into here to protect the applicant and the farmer, so that if water's tested and there's a high level of nitrates, that we don't assume it just immediately comes from the applicant. I, possibly, there's other farms around there that also fertilize or spray. I know sometimes we have grasshopper outbreaks, those type of things. Maybe staff could...
In your, the condition of approval 19, as it stands right now, will be recommend limiting or prohibiting the use of fertilizer, herbicide, and pesticide unless environmentally friendly. That will be in the CCNRs, because it's just going to be the private landowners that are fertilizing. So, if that's part of the CCNRs, that should contain that here.
I don't, I don't know how we would voice, I mean, I think what I hear you saying is like if a farm a mile up Davis does something and gets into the water source, and now we're asking this developer to test, how do we not hold this developer accountable to an upstream user? And I don't know how we can do that. I don't know if there's anything in here that does that.
Okay, and that was just a thought. I do know sometimes other farms do fertilize or use pesticides, so.
So what, but to clarify, I don't know that there's any, anything in here that requires them to do testing.
Unless the surface water leaves the...
Well, the surface water will not leave the site.
Okay, great.
So how do we ensure that that, so in the development agreement, there, do they have to do a berm so it doesn't leave the site? I mean, how can you guarantee?
There's a berm on the south side that's proposed in between the Frontage Road and Davis Creek Lane. Davis Creek Lane itself will be 100 feet, and there's existing landscaping on the west side.
On Cantola, there's landscaping. Is it elevated? I'm sorry?
Coskella.
Oh, Coskella. Is that elevated that would maintain?
You could put a condition that the landscaping along Coskella will also retain the water. I believe all of their site grading stormwater management plans showed that, and it's the applicant that said, "Surface water will be, will not leave the site." And their specific plans will need to show that, and our engineer will, engineer will review and approve that.
Okay.
I think it should be a condition of approval that if the applicant decides to sell the gravel commercially, he'll have to come back for a CUP.
Oh, the gravel, okay.
That was one of mine too. Can't be sold commercially. And mitigation, address in the development agreement for that CUP to... If they, if they sell commercially, you know, in their raining roads, then we need to have something in our development agreement for that CUP too. Got it? Let me check my notes.
What date was this originally approved? Was that '22 or?
The P&amp;Z Commission was, it was approved at the December meeting in 2024.
2024.
And appealed on the 23rd.
And then this one turned around and came back and added 21 more lots, I believe.
Oh, you mean the original approval?
Yeah.
2007? Other than that, I think I presented most of my deliberations at the past meeting. Go next, you have to.
That's fine, yeah. No, I just, I just, I mean, I've read everything, listened to everybody's concern. Organic farm with the water, with all of it, and as long as it's, you know, covered in the, our conditions of approval, everything that we've discussed, I'm, I'm good with this. I don't, P&amp;Z did their due diligence, and passed it. And as long as this thing is put together by what it shows in the conditions of approval, I don't, I don't see anything that's throwing a red flag. There are a lot of things that's already in there that is going to have to be met, be able to make this go forward. So I'm good with that.
I think most of mine have already been addressed too. Mine was wastewater remain on-site. I did put building a berm on that Coskella road in my notes. The noxious weed control, I think, was addressed by planning and zoning, and then delivering irrigation water through the pipe ditch to downstream users. I'm dealing with that in the irrigation or development agreement. So, there was a comment during the February 10th meeting that was a question about the stream channel protection program. I just put work with IDWR to ensure the stream channel protection program is not violated, if it's actually needed.
Right, I'm not aware of any waters under the jurisdiction of Idaho Department of Water Resource going through here. I'm not aware of a creek flowing across this property. I think it's all irrigation ditches.
Yeah, okay. Well, I would just put that in there, that if it is needed...
Just a condition.
That they work with, yeah, to make sure that nothing has been violated there. I want to make sure that we call out that the surface water right is to create irrigation systems for the homeowners as well as the common areas. So, that irrigation water needs to be utilized, and if there's not enough water shares that it's called out somewhere, that the wells can only water a half acre. Then I put in my CCNRs to reference the dogs on the leash. I think P&amp;Z did that one, the noxious weeds. And I think the noxious weeds needs to be something that is a long-term commitment, so if the owner is not managing theirs, especially, you know, these two, three, four acre lots, if they're, if they're not living there, the chance of them managing an ap weed infestation is going to be a little bit difficult. So, just put on it that an HOA will be required to manage any noxious weeds at the expense of the landowner, if for some reason they're not maintaining them. That's important for that organic farm next door. Wildfire plans, they need to be managed into the future. P&amp;Z got that one too, if I remember right. There's a lot of concern about those wetlands. I don't know, maybe in the development agreement, I don't know if the developer's willing to do it or not, but just discuss the wetlands, maybe deal conservation easement on those wetlands. If it doesn't impact, and it's important to the surrounding homeowners that those conservation, or those wetlands not be disturbed. Maybe we can discuss that in the development agreement.
So they're delineating the ones, you know, north of Phase 1 down, you know, on the northern portion of the property. We did receive a letter from a concerned citizen that we protect those wetlands, because in the subdivision they platted, their homeowners are riding their four-wheelers and things on the wetlands, and they are not able to protect it. So, requiring something in the CCNRs to protect those from...
Recreation.
Recreation. And we can fine tune that in the, a condition of approval.
And is it a condition of approval that the wetlands will be no-build areas?
I think there needs to be something, there was concern, and Neil keeps voicing this too, but if this application expires, this subdivision will be held to this density in future applications, so that it never gets more dense than it is today, since it's already had to increase once.
And that one, please consider that if this expires, and they don't apply for an extension, and it does expire like it did before, when they reapply, it would be held to the standards of that ordinance, whatever ordinance was in place. I mean, at some point in the future, there might be sewer here, and then they could go denser type of thing. Does that satisfy your concern, Commissioner? It would be held to the standard under the current ordinance.
And I guess the way I look at it is, you know, the surrounding landowners have gone through one phase of this where it was less dense than it is today. So, we are adopting it as a denser subdivision, and to satisfy the surrounding homeowners, thinking that, you know, this wouldn't be a way for a developer to say, "Oh, sewer's going to be coming out, I'm just not going to develop this thing and wait for it." And then all of a sudden, in this area, we have one acre pitches or quarters, whatever that would be. To me, I don't know what you did, you guys can respond to that one. That was what my thought was, so. Just a thought, I would just recommend that maybe we contact IDWR to incorporate one of the wells in the subdivision to be one of the monitoring wells for the county. Doesn't cost the homeowner anything, but it is a big, you know, because water quantity has been such an issue for, of concern in this area. Just ask IDWR to monitor one of these wells.
Is it IDWR or DEQ that does that?
I thought it was IDWR, so I will just leave that open. An agency.
Okay. Can't remember which one it is. I know what you're talking about, though.
I, I also want put in there as a specific, you know, no commercial sale of this gravel unless the CUP is obtained and a development agreement is put in place.
If gravel sold commercially, it would need a separate conditional use permit and a development agreement for roads, for road impacts.
And then you already have in there that they will meet the IDL requirements for gravel extraction by providing a reclamation bond? That's in one of the P&amp;Z requirements, I think.
If it's commercial, it will have to be.
Okay.
If it's not a commercial use, they don't have to have the reclamation bond. But the applicant did agree to reclaim the property if, for some reason, they abandoned. There will be a performance bond in place.
In the development agreement, when we get there? So, I'm always about local housing, and this is not a subdivision. It's going to be local housing. I would love to work with the developer to figure out if there is a way that maybe we can provide some financial assistance to create local housing in the area. So, that would be a conversation for later, not a requirement certainly, because we can't do that. A conversation with the community about that would be a good, positive thing. And I think planning and zoning got all the rest of them, so I think we would need to adopt that.
Well, I picked up some as you were going through the public hearing testimony in your deliberations. Long-term maintenance of the ponds is required. See wastewater cannot leave the site, okay, we got that one. Must maintain irrigation flow to downstream users. How about must maintain irrigation with water rights downstream users?
Senator, are those ponds going to be lined or unlined?
Yes, they are lined. The ones that are currently there are also lined.
And the water will be piped, surface water cannot leave the site. Just weeds. That was it? I think you guys duplicated all the ones that you previously stated. I do want to point out, we, we, there was a conversation also that the impact scores were wrong. I did my own score on this, and I had a positive eight. I don't think that the scoring was incorrect, that there is a range there. If you guys did your own, I'd have been deliberating, but mine was positive eight, so I would have approved this also. There were some comments given about the impact on Valley County infrastructure. So I think what we all need to start having the conversation about is EMS just passed their own funding structure. Fire districts have their own funding structure. So when we're talking about this, we're talking about sheriff roads. Roads that developers do provide offsite road improvements through development agreements based on the number of lots that they have, so that does help to offset the road infrastructure and road improvements. We always reach out to the schools. They have not had, they have not commented on this subdivision, so I don't know of any impact to the schools. If they can't get that information, I don't know how to mitigate against that. There was a comment that this is going to degrade the nature of the lots surrounding them and property values surrounding them, that it's not historically true, and has actually been stated by maybe one of the attorneys in the room, that agricultural around, ground around residential development goes up in value. So, that point I don't believe is correct. There was a comment about ingress egress. Well, in this subdivision, there are two exit points onto two different roads. Matter of fact, there's three or four different roads that people could exit onto, and so I think ingress egress is covered. There's a lot of conversation around density, and I will just put in the record on this one. This is definitely not a dense subdivision. In my opinion, density, we have a minimum one acre lot in Valley County, and that is rural residential. And so, density, when you go into areas where you're expecting centralized services, to me, that is when you're looking at city-type lots. That is quarter acre, half acre lots are dense subdivisions. These are not dense subdivisions. Let's see, was there anything else that was raised that we haven't? Open space keeps getting brought up. I will again state for the record, Valley County is 90% to 92% open space through Florida service lands and State of Idaho lands. Plating for open space, we have a lot of open space. We are going to continue to eat up our lands really rapidly if we have large designated areas, and this one actually does have 12-plus acre wetlands within it, so. There was a statement made in the rebuttal that planning and zoning did not have the sufficient information to make their facts and conclusions. There was not a defined statement on what the basis was for that statement made. So, I didn't, didn't know how to address that one. And the planning and zoning facts and conclusions number five did not have a reasoned statement and no basis to conclude that there would be no adverse impact. And again, I wasn't, I couldn't even go back to number five and see what that was referencing, so. It was not information, I think reasoned statement was correct. And then a lot of conversation, and there's a lot of conversation about the impact to farmers and how it's going to impact. Well, we do have a Right to Farm Act that goes on every single plot. Farmers have first right in Idaho, and we will always continue to, to speak to that. Hopefully, we have addressed all of the concerns. What we do is we try and take every single letter that we get, every comment that we get, and we try and reflect in our records the mitigation to the concerns that our citizens have. And we will continue to do that moving forward, so. That is it.
May I?
Yes.
If everybody's done. Okay, so did you find that there was not undue adverse impact on the environment?
There was no...
Is that part of the Central District Health DEQ discussion you had?
And we didn't see, I mean, there was a lot of discussion around that, but there was no factual statement made. There was no information shared with us on how that would be an undue impact on the environment. So, I don't know how to respond to something unless I know what the data is behind it that they're giving us. But yeah, I mean, the Central District Health, we discussed the fact that CDH has been in charge of septic and wells, and there was a lot of conversation too about elk depredation, but we did not get anything back from Fish and Game that states that this was an area that would, there would be elk depredation.
You did get a letter from Fish and Game stating that there are, there's a lot of elk depredation in the area, and that they actually plant crops and things in other locations to try to draw the elk out of this area because of the depredation to the farms. That was, and then they had recommendations, which the P&amp;Z incorporated into their conditions of approval, you know, like the dogs running and that type of thing. And the no planting of the vegetation that isn't good for the elk. Let's see, so the express standards, did you, I don't know that you talked about that. I think the P&amp;Z did.
I, I think I addressed that in my initial deliberations at it, that this application does meet all the express standards of Valley County as listed by staff.
Did you find that the impact report was complete? I think that was one thing brought up.
Yes, yes. I went back through the impact report, I thought it was complete.
And we saw the site grading stormwater management plans, preliminary ones, in the original application that was submitted at the last hearing. All lots are adequate in size. Fugitive dust, you might put a condition in to control the fugitive dust during construction, so it doesn't float over onto the farms.
I would be in favor of that.
Great, that's a good one, thank you.
I, I think the prevailing ones usually take it like northeast, but...
There's a comment made, one of the things on the ecological system. There was a comment made that it could have an impact on the rest of the ecosystem. I mean, these are broad statements with no fact behind them at all. You can make a statement, but for us, for us to look at that, to mitigate the impact, I mean, that, that's just too broad to even respond to. It's got to be more reasoned in the statement, if you want us to, any mitigation there.
I think the other one that was brought up was the ITD letter. that required the traffic study, but it was determined that they withdrew that original letter once she realized that there were already turn lanes on fifty-five leading to the site.
Since the gravel extraction is not going to be a commercial use, are they still under the rules for the time? The, they can't have an above specified noise level?
No, maybe you need to put some time limits for construction in here.
I think that'd be good, especially for the gravel excavation, if they're, especially if they're gonna crash on site. Just our standard hours, seven to seven, Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday. That would mitigate the impacts to the, any residential uses around there.
And the appeal, I don't think they ever listed their extent of damages. They didn't quantify that as required in the nine-five-H twelve. And I think it met all the similar requirements for preliminary plat, did you find that? Yes. One of the questions too, and this came up unfortunately in the February tenth meeting without the opportunity to be addressed, but the insufficient data on water quality and quantity. We had testimony, and I believe his last name was Ted Hill?
Ted Hill.
Ted Hill. So he was a water specialist and told us about the water in this area, that there was data, that there was a tremendous amount of water quantity in this area. And so I, I think that that addressed that, one of that concerns. The one, the high water lines, I'm sorry? He actually did, I read in the minutes, presented on that at the P&amp;Z meeting, so people did have the opportunity to hear and present twice. Okay. And then the high water lines and wetlands need to be established with appropriate setbacks. So those are setbacks. Who establishes the setbacks on the wetlands? I mean, is that part of our?
The definition of a high water line is where the vegetation is denuded.
Okay.
And so the ponds, you know, there won't, it'll be thirty feet from that high water line for any structures over three feet in height. We don't have setbacks from wetlands. Those are under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. And any thing done to those wetlands, they will have to get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers.
Are any of the lots structured to where a building would be within thirty feet of those?
No.
Or do we need to put something on it that specifically states that, you know, we would like a setback from those?
There is nothing, the, the lot sizes are large enough that there will be building sites on every lot proposed. That will be better fine tuned when they come in with a sanitary restriction release letter through Central District Health once they monitor the second phase test holes.
And I think we can address that if we need to in the development agreement. All right, that's all I'm seeing in my notes. Things take an awfully long length of time. We appreciate our legal counsel for helping us review some of this and all the time that we, the energy we put into this, so. All right, I would entertain a motion. We're ready to do so.
I'm, I'm sorry, one other thing, this is not in a map floodplain.
Okay.
There's no map floodplain on this property.
Okay.
All right.
Doesn't matter.
I'll make a motion that we approve CUP twenty-four twenty-four, Billford River Ranch Public. Subdivision?
Can deny the appeal? Can deny the appeal?
Is this a denial that we're doing?
Deny the appeal.
This is a denial of the appeal.
Deny of the appeal.
Of the commission approval, and so, and then you're approving it with the conditions of approval.
And approving it with the conditions of approval, okay.
Does he need to add that we also adopt the, the conditions of approval from the planning and zoning?
With all listed conditions of approval, which include the P&amp;Z commission ones. We'll come back with that.
I have this all in writing.
That's okay. We're just talking through it. So, so everyone's aware, all of those conditions of approval from the P&amp;Z commission will be included with the ones generated by the Board of County Commissioners. And we will fine tune those, I mean, because what I said was kind of rough, and bring it back for your final approval and your facts and conclusions.
All right.
I hear a second?
Second.
Moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this time, our next is an opportunity for the general public to speak to commissioners. If anyone is in the room, we'd like to speak to the commissioners. Not, they adjourn the meeting for today.